Please call the finance personnel committee. Order, it is Wednesday. Team PM. President felt Mike Kepers.
Chris Stube.
Stube back and. Donnie current appears by zoom. If we could go through the minutes from February thirteenth, February twenty third, the twenty seventh and March seventh meeting.
I was at, I was present for them meeting, so I think everything is pretty much in order from what I've read and seen on him, so I'll make a motion to approve the. The minutes as presented.
In a second. For motion made in seconded, any discussion? On favor.
I.
Opposed. Here is. Library report.
Christina is on.
Hi Christina, you're muted.
Got it. Can you hear me good now?
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, um, I guess things are going well at the library. Um, at the top of the program or the. Report that was in your packet, there are a few pictures from our April programs, just story time, one of our. Kids that participated in the what not one thousand books before kindergarten program. This little boy with his parents will read a thousand books, so we're pretty proud of him. And then another, the last picture is of a multi-generational kind of book club. That we had back in in April too, and then the bottom of the report kind of shows you some of the things that. We've done this week with a comic book, uh, pre-comic book giveaway. And then last night, the friends of the library also had a an author invited one in from River Falls. And then later this month. Some of my coworkers will be leading a book discussion. And partnering with all of brewing to have that over there, so looking forward to that too. So that is kind of what is going on in May, but I'm also happy to answer any questions about. Anything else about the library? Or anything people want to know or invite anybody to come in anytime, meet with me, show them around. Whatever.
Christina, what are your hours there?
Our hours are. Monday, Wednesday and Friday, the library is open nine AM to six PM. And then Tuesday and Thursday, the library is open nine AM to seven PM and Saturdays, the library is open nine. To one. So we're open fifty five hours a week.
Anything else?
I don't have anything else, but always happy to answer questions.
You Christine, who foresee a major uptake in the in the summer months with usage of the library?
Yes, yes, always when school gets out those usually July is the library's busiest month. We will offer summer reading programs and then we also try to prevent that summer reading slide by encouraging kids to come in and check out books, so we offer reading incentives. During that time and that's usually pretty successful. So yeah, then. Families or teachers also have time to come into the library that at that time of year too.
Good, nice. But you got additional programs, I assume, like you were saying, it they it mostly in July or is it June as well?
We're doing, I think it's four weeks of pretty big program, so we have about a hundred people. So every Thursday at one o'clock in July is what. What we're trying to hit there, it gets a little pricey because we do bring presenters in. So that's kind of what we can, we can offer as of right now. But we try to get some, you know, like a little bit more affordable programs and then every week, of course, we offer story time too, so. Kind of the normal stuff.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Christina.
Yeah.
Impact fee report.
Uh, this is, um. The monthly report that I. Provide. Just showing the impact fees that have been lifted throughout the year. So far this year.
And that's which which sheets are these?
Question on on the impact fees Andrea, I think we have, was it five in April? New new.
Yep.
So that. Do we ever revisit those impact fees or is that something the board does?
Um, so what happens is. Engineer that the village contracts with. Would do a needs assessment and reevaluate. The projects that are contained inside that need assessment versus. The development that has occurred in the village or is going to occur, which which direction? The village is expanding and then present that. With either. New fee amounts or keeping them the same. Maybe shuffling some projects around to to cover. More of the the funds that are collected so far. Was that explain them?
Hey, how often does that is that done? Is that done an annual or biannual or every?
I believe the last one was in. Twenty eleven or twenty twelve. There's not really a set. Amount of time that it's redone. It's. Based on the needs of the the community.
So, well, I know the reason I ask is because, you know, costs have drastically increased. Last in this last year and I don't know if we're taking into any consideration on that. That's why I was asking how. Often and if we haven't touched that in ten years, is that a costly thing for us to? To have the engineer look at and determine whether or not, you know, and not like I want to board an additional cost on anybody for. For coming to the community, but I don't want to, you know, borne it on the taxpayers that are already here either.
Right, so you may recall last November, I believe it was, I requested to be able to put that out for. A request for proposals to do. My new needs assessment or at least a review of. Our current needs assessment and that was approved by the board and then. It just. It hasn't been put out there. Um, our financial advisor Sean at elders. Has said he would discuss it with the sewer rate study. That is coming to the board on. Next Tuesday.
Okay, so there's.
Is.
There is a potential. There is a potential timeline then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because I'm not mistaken, I think the township is like twenty five hundred dollars.
It's based on. So many. Are you? So much for are you, there's. Calculations that are way over my head. On how they figure the.
It's worth, it's worthy of a discussion with them. I did, I that's what, you know, I just want to know where that I know I vaguely remember that we had that discussion, but I didn't know. What that was at, so good that good and know that we're gonna be touching base on that.
Moving right along, department head meeting report.
There has not been one since the last regular finance meeting. So I'm not going on that.
Are you? Cause I spoke with Joel about it yesterday, I believe, but. I wanted to be able to do zoom meetings, but then can you set me up with a zoom account through the and then I can just. We can schedule. Meetings with the different department heads even by zoom.
All okay.
I think that'd be the easiest way.
You can set up a zoom account.
In the village though.
It's free, you don't even have to set it up through the village.
Well, the village is having department head meetings, why would?
Oh, you mean you want, you want us to set up a zoom and you attend via zoom?
Yes.
Got it, yes.
So like every, every Monday, I think we said like nine o'clock, I was going to meet with Joel. Just to get an update over what happened during the week, weekend stuff. Planning on doing the same thing with with Gunther and and Fannig.
Okay. I'll figure that out.
Okay, thank you. You guys have any thoughts on that?
No, it sounds good.
That's something, is that something you want us involved with or is that something you wanted to just kind of sit down with the the other department heads? Because I believe the department heads, correct me if I'm wrong Andrea, it's you, Bob, work with me here a little bit.
Joel, Christina.
Okay.
And the clerk.
And and do you normally have them once a month? Is that a because?
Once a month, once every other month. We do just to. Touch base and. Update each other on what's happening in each area of the. Functions of the village.
Okay.
So maybe we can kind of split it up a little bit. Chris and I can do when she's available, do the zoom with. The chief, you as public works guy can do with Jim and Gunther. And. Would you be willing to do the library, Chris?
Sure.
And then Andrea and then whoever we decided the new clerk.
So is that in place of what we already are doing where the department heads are meeting?
Well, I was gonna say, I think Mike, you might be misunderstood here that all of the department heads get together and they meet.
Once, once every two week. Two months. When's the last time you have a payment?
I believe it was February. Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
It was reviewed at the last.
If we could do more weekly meetings and they don't have to be much can be over like a computer and. That way we're just kind of. Paying the loop a little bit.
I think we'll still probably have our own meetings.
Yeah, that's fine.
To continue that camaraderie between the department.
Yeah. I agree. I agree, okay. Twenty twenty three budget to date and fund balances.
Everything seems to be in. Where I seen, I think there was just. Maybe one thing that was out of sorts, but I think that we already had touched base on that, so do you, did you see anything out of out of whack on that at all Andrea or?
No.
Okay, so it's all, everything's kind of in line?
Mm hmm. Yep, um. I don't, were you referring to the insurance? Her news?
Yes, as a matter of fact, that was the three hundred ninety seven percent or whatever it was.
Yeah, so, um. It's, um. It's a quarterly payment. So the. The computer doesn't understand that it's purely payment, it thinks it's a monthly payment, so. It all works out at the end of the year that it's allocated correctly with the right percentages.
We're just into halfway into month five here, where are we at with the overall? Budget percentage.
Can't go off the revenue number because. The village tax levy has not been. Fully received yet, so that's not in there. We're at thirty five percent on expenses, it's very last page.
Thirty five point oh six and up one.
Yeah.
What does this municipal building and other expense include? Page four, first the bottom.
It's anything in the village hall, like anything to take care of the building.
Mm hmm, yeah.
Do we? Currently have like a building maintenance supervisor, something. Needs to be fixed or.
Public works.
Could we put that on the next agenda to be able to appoint somebody as building maintenance supervisor? I know I was in the police department last week and and there's a desperate need for. Paint, ceiling tiles, lights. It's in pretty rough shape back there. Donnie, anything to add there?
Well, I was just gonna say that you got an agenda item here on M. About police department improvements, I don't know if you want to, you know. If you want to recommend something to, you know, as far as improvements, you know, we are. Have been talking with three different companies about doing a facilities needs survey and. I I I think, you know, maybe that might be something where we talk to them. In regards to seeing if they would recommend that we have a facility, you know. Buildings supervisor, a maintenance supervisor, or if that's something that we just tie into one of the other guys' job duties right now. I I I'd be interested to see what what they see in other other areas, you know, and how they how they handle that.
How much does something like that cost you then?
That would never. Oh, well, he's twenty four thou- uh, twenty four hundred or twenty four thousand?
Oh, no.
I I think like Joel and I were saying, even like five hundred dollars in supplies will go a long ways and then we can. We can bid out.
I wish Joel was out there because they're already starting to take care of it. With, um. One of the officers has volunteered, it's time to. And and paint, yeah, so. And it was fifty dollars.
Yeah, Joel is getting bids on what to take the carpet out to put in.
Should we discuss that on the actual agenda item versus the budget?
Sure. Anything to add on the budget? Moving on, ordinance revision for committee meeting dates and times.
So I included in the packet the actual ordinance regarding standing committees and I could not find anywhere in the ordinance that it states. Committees meet on certain days sometimes, so I don't believe that needs to be revised.
Great, is, uh, is everybody in favor of the public? Public safety on the second Monday and. And then at five thirty and. Public Works and Personnel and Finance on the. On the second Wednesday at five thirty and seven.
I am not in favor of two meetings on one month. It gets to be a long day and. For those, Donnie, who has to attend the first meeting and the second meeting. It gets to be. A long time, especially when now that first meeting ran over. Fifteen minutes, so then now we're starting this meeting twenty minutes late. Then however long this meeting is going to go, you know, it's just. It's hard. To have two meetings on one day.
Well, and I think we can streamline it a little more, I just, I've been, I put a ton of stuff on. The public works agenda, you know, and our. Stuff on the personnel and finance committee agenda, I think Donnie made. Good time with with everything for how much stuff was on there. Donnie, what works best for you, the having one? Long. Night like this where you can commit to it or two separate nights. Because for for me, it would, Wednesday works better because it's for me, it's a. My kids have sports games Tuesdays and Thursdays and not typically on Wednesdays.
Well, you know, we. We. We have to take into consideration also. Other individuals wanting to attend both meetings. You know, from from the village as well and I always kind of looked at it as if. If I wanted to sit through a three hour meeting, I wouldn't want to make. My constituents sit through a three hour meeting, so, you know, if if we, if we're going to continue to run. You know, an hour and a half for each meeting and, you know, an hour and a half for these meetings, I know we're all kind of starting to. Get our feet under us with regards to these positions and stuff and I feel with Andrea saying. You know, if it's going to be a lot of stuff on these agendas, then maybe we need to move them. If it's going to be, you know, tapered down a little bit, you know, some of these meetings, we were able to get public works done. And sometimes in a half an hour and and. Personal and finance done in a half an hour and in one hour's time, we were out of there, so I think really we need to be fluid enough to look at our agendas. And, you know, you you tell me, you know, is it what's a what's a good fallback if we have a a full agenda, not only for us, but for our constituents of whether or not we need to. Maybe move a a meeting because of a significant, you know, agenda items.
Would you guys be in favor of trying this a couple more? Meetings and and if we can't get her, get things done in a timely fashion, then we look to change it then.
Okay with that.
Oh, you're dying.
Well. Again, I don't want to see a lot of our. Our our people on it, you know, if we if we can keep it down to, you know, taking into consideration the the. The staff and and, you know, now Andrea, do you do you stick around through both meetings or? Did you duck out and then come back for this meeting?
I left for an hour and a half and came back.
Okay, so that's. That's kind of a tough thing too, you know, to leave and then come back and, you know. You know, I I I look at, I look at that as, you know. I I wouldn't want to put them through. Through that, if you were to come back for a normal meeting, you'd be here at what, six o'clock? Would you just stay here then or would you take off and then come back?
I would probably stay.
Okay. Yeah, I I have no problem going the route you're saying, but if we got a bunch of stuff on the agenda, I'm gonna want to revisit that.
An emotion?
So we're gonna, we're, are we gonna keep everything in with two meetings on Wednesdays? You know, looking. I'm struggling with that a little bit. I'd rather, you know, for the all intense purposes, you know, the only one that really affects is me because I'm a, I got two meetings on the on the on the same night, right?
I'm still here, Donnie.
And 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 you got regular, you know, guys like Brandon and, you know, Mike that would be at these meetings, you know, sitting in in the, you know. Observing at that point in time, so maybe maybe it's a. It's worthy of us moving it. But you want to move it to a Wednesday, would it be a chance of maybe we could do like the first Wednesday of the month? And finance or personnel and then. And then go through. Keeping the public works and in and public safety intact or?
I think if anything. Personnel and finance after public works and public safety.
Okay.
What you do, if you want to move it to the public. Work the first Wednesday of the month and then. Finance and personnel the second Wednesday of the month.
Well, I I don't want to decide anything on behalf of the other members and we've already kind of agreed that that's what it is, so. If it was, if it's, if 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 we are. You know, sticking to keeping public or personnel. With public safety or with public works, then let's just leave it where it is right now and and. And and then if, you know, I try to streamline that a little bit more. Because I don't want.
Recommendation to it's not, you're just recommending to the board where it can be discussed further with all the board members.
And technically, we don't need to revise the work then, right?
Correct.
Because we don't want it very specific.
Yeah.
Motion then?
Yeah, I don't think there's really a need for a motion for recommendation on anything at this point in time because we're not changing anything other, we're keeping the personnel. Where it's at, right? The personal find.
All right, discussion possible recommendation locking mailboxes for the village, police and court. Fifteen years ago. When the post office was down here in the corner, anything within a quarter mile couldn't have a regular mailbox. Since then, we've. Been at three different mailboxes or post office boxes that were. Paying a hundred and I think it's at a hundred and seventy seven.
Actually ninety dollars.
Ninety for years.
For the police, it's it's on here.
Three hundred a month times.
Ninety a year.
For ninety year, right? Ninety year times three. Seventy times fifteen years. Four thousand dollars plus the time and effort and energy to. Go get the mail, especially with. With road construction until November. And the other part for me is when I was with the police department, I always thought it was really tacky putting a. Post office box, you know, Somerset Police Department, post office box one five eight. Should be Somerset Police Department, one ten Spring Street, Somerset Village Hall, one ten Spring Street. You can see in the packet. The mailbox that that the postal carrier recommends is. Two hundred and fifty dollars for the mailbox and seventy five dollars for the post. They would put it right across the the road. And if it was too much mail, the postal carrier will will bring it right into the office for us.
When you say they are, you were saying the post office is going to put this box up?
No, no, I'll just put the box up, I put two of them up, it's a postal digger and a bag of sack creeds. It'll take me ten minutes if that. And I talked to Judge Nemec yesterday about it. He's like, well, how would it work with sorting? I said, well, how does it work for office buildings or the school? He's like, yeah. Oh, I totally get what you're saying now, it's. They have a mail room, they sort it out and it's. So. It's a lock, a lockable box where. A village employee can go out, get the mail, sort the police department mail, the court mail and the regular water utility and. And front office mail. So for the four thousand dollars we spent or more over the last fifteen years, it won't cost us. It'll cost us three hundred and fifty dollars for a one time charge right now. And don't have to. And don't have to worry about the employees or time and fuel and everything to go get mail.
I wonder about security, combining those three boxes.
Law firms do it, schools do it, um. And then.
Sure, would it be possible to install free? I mean, I know.
With one, it's, it's one address, so they said just. One box. And they, they liked our, the size of the box, cause big and it's lockable.
Yeah, get little packages in there.
Yep. And then also they would deliver the other packages to, if it was too big for the box.
Any idea what the cost would be to change all the letterhead envelopes, things like that? That would need to be done, right?
It can be done, you know.
Every single farm in this office, in this building would have to change. Every farm on the computer.
That would be good and it would make this look less tacky, I think.
I know, to me, a pew box is professional, because, you know, it's, it's legit, safe. But this looks nice and dirty too. I like saving money.
Me too.
You seem to have a, a little bit of reservation on this. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but you have, you have any, you know, I, I want to get your opinions on this as well.
I don't really see the, the necessity for it. Um, sometimes going to the post office is the only break we get during the day. So, and to change. Every single document is going to take a lot of time and wasted paper, wasted envelopes, which aren't cheap either, so. I don't see, I don't see the need for it. Especially since we already paid for this year. For the pew box, I was wondering too.
And, and I don't see just getting rid of the post office box, but they also said it.
Well, we've already experienced, um. We've already experienced a, a little bit of time with this bridge being shut down. How much longer has it, it, has it taken for you to travel around and, and, uh, who's covering that cost? Is, are you, are we paying mileage on that? I, I don't know, I gotta ask the question.
Not at all. I take my personal vehicle. I do not charge any mileage, any gas. Um, it's ten minutes more.
It takes me look, ten minutes drive, just drive around for church and ten minutes back every day. So you're, you're talking ten minutes each way or ten minutes, okay? So.
But I can say for the PD, um, we do a lot of certified mail too, where we get blood kits, um, we're, we're up there. At least three times a week. We're already out of control as it is, um, in a village drawn vehicle. Um, I'm in favor of keeping the, the pew box the way it is. Especially for the established context that we have with outside agencies and or. Um, lab hygiene, the state crime lab. Trying to update our email alone has been a challenge to the point where a lot of folks haven't changed my domain name yet. Um, and there's things that are being lost in translation and I'm fearful that change is hard for some people. And we would get some things lost and I, I want to be critical for a case. Um, or something specific for them. That's my two cents.
Appreciate that, Joel, and, uh, you know, that's what it, we're here to listen to this and, but you know, that it's, it's a very good idea that Mike has. About, about doing this to one, save time and, and two, it's right here, uh, three, you know. Uh, I, I'm, I was a member of a pretty well-established organization that. Uh, moved and we had to, uh, give notices and make all those changes and stuff like that. It's a, it's a, it's an undertaking, but it's done once. And, 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 uh, for the most part, if it's, you know, everything gets routed because the post office knows it. But, um. Uh, if, if, uh. If there's, if there's certain things that are coming in for the police, uh, that need to be, you know, that, that security thing that I'm, I'm concerned about there. Is, is that Chris had raised, uh, my ears kind of perked up a little bit on that, you know, if they got certified, they get blood kits, they get certain things that come in. I don't know if I want to, uh, encourage, um, Andrea or Amy or anybody else handling that kind of stuff. And it, didn't you say that also comes out of their budget?
What's that?
Did you also say that it comes out of their budget?
Um, the cost of the pew box?
Yes.
Yeah. So each, each department, the court pays theirs, um, the police department pays theirs and. The. General fund pays whatever it is, municipal clerks expenses pays the. Three, five, six, P O R.
You guys get any deliveries into the, into the office, uh, right now?
Not the post office.
Are you guys wishes?
I guess at this time I would make motions table this until. Later in the year. So we can examine the costs again. And I'd like to get the, the rest of the board as well, honestly. Like the idea, I just, there's certain things that make me uncomfortable that I'm not quite ready to just go ahead with that. I wonder if we could put in the three boxes, I wonder if the post office let us assign one ten A B and C.
Yeah, I, 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 you know, in our, in the, in the organization I belong to, there was multiple boxes at that one location. It was seven, ten, suite five hundred, suite five oh, uh, suite five oh one, suite one oh four, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So I think maybe, um, we do get a little more, um, information on that. Because I, I, I really don't, I'm, I'm not comfortable asking them guys to handle, um. The police department's, uh, um, you know, stuff on that. I, I, that, that point that was brought up by Joel. Kind of got my ears up on that one. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of, of streamlining things. I'm just, uh. I want to think about this a little bit more, so I'll second that motion to table it until, uh, we get a little further information on that.
Table it till the next personnel finance or bring it to the, the board.
Well, I think, I think we, if we table it to personal finance, it gives us a month to look at it. We already got the, the, um. The, well, Chris, what's your motion?
Yeah, I would say at least until the next personal finance. I don't think, I'd like more time. I don't think we'd be ready on Tuesday. Personally.
Good, there's a good.
I'm fine to find a second that.
Discussion, all in favor?
I.
Discussion possible recommendation, social media policy for village trustees.
I think we already have one.
Well, it came up when, uh, when I asked Andrea how I was able to update the village. Facebook page and she said you couldn't. I said, uh, I asked her for the minutes and she said it was in closed session, so I couldn't get the minutes. So I, um, I just think we could do, like with this bridge and construction project. I think we could do a lot better job than we have of getting the information out. And I think the trustees should have access to be able to do that, long as we're following our. Our own, uh, guidelines in the handbook.
So you're seeing trustees add content to the village Facebook page?
Yes, the book of information that's.
Well, I think, I think, the way I, the way I understand it from the, the, uh, the, uh, YouTube is that. Um, you know, the trustees can add stuff to it and then there was like a backup from, from the, um. Um, from, uh, somebody from the, the, the village as an employee. And then also if I believe, uh, that Chris Marino was, um. Was mentioned and mentioned something about, uh, uh, that there was, uh, Facebook that he needed to get with. Somebody in regards to, you know, being like the secondary on Facebook or whatnot. Great, I, I'm not here to spread rumors or anything like that, so, uh, you know, what actually is the policy?
So. I can speak to the, the YouTube policy was specifically crafted outside of the social media policy. We have a social media policy on hand at the time, so, um, the YouTube stuff was put in just so we had a mechanism in case. Of transferring it more or less, um, but ever since I've been on the board, um, Andrea's always had the page and she's always ran the page. Um, I think we can have our own Facebook pages, um. But yeah, I think the employees have always ran the Facebook page. I think there is stuff, the public works has been putting stuff on there and, uh. And you have been putting on there, you've been posting a lot more on there since.
Well, I, 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 I know, speaking from public works as a chair, I, I've, I've reached out to Jim on things and I've told him, hey, we got to make sure we get this posted. And Bob does too, and, and that, that, there's never been any issue, it just gets done, you know, so when we ask for it as a. As trustees, usually that stuff gets posted, so if there's concerns about it, you know, it, uh, you know, getting things posted on Facebook. And it doesn't get done, then we can discuss that. Uh, but if there is, uh, if, if there's, uh, uh, you know, whether or not it's, it conforms with our policies and, 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 uh. You know, our, our social media policies already, but I mean, if, if you, if you're, if you're asking for things to get posted on, on Facebook. Uh, Mike, that, uh, that's not getting done, uh, you know, we can have that discussion. I, I don't know if, 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 uh. We need to put somebody else in charge of that or, or, well, you got something, you send an email and it gets posted. I, I never had an issue with Jim. Or Bob for that matter.
I've never been asked to put anything on Facebook.
Okay.
Except for the clerk position.
Well, if there's things that need to be posted, I strongly, you know, suggest that, you know, you send it over to. And, and Andrea, you would have, you won't have any issues with posting it, right? Unless, if it, as long as it conforms with, uh. With our policies, right?
That's fine with me. All right, uh, bridge, uh, arch bridge sign, uh, through the cap process. Um, but a lot of things that came up were village signage and kind of lack thereof. And, uh, I don't know if anything got in the packet, but we were. We were hoping to do something along the lines of, of this across the, the bridge as you're coming down the hill from. Quick trip towards Dairy Queen.
Why you're not?
Is, is that the one that, uh, was brought up at the caps meeting with that, that same photo?
Correct, yeah. Like Hudson has there is at the end of the Peter. Um, so we thought now would be a good time since they're doing all the, this bridge work. Now would be a good time to get the footings in and then worry about the sign later on.
I would put that to stock to get a change order on.
Yeah, I already, I emailed Chuck a month ago or two on it, to see what the, the cost would be on it, um. And then, uh, Caleb Garn, he, he suggested that we go to like, um, American Structural Metals and. Um, see if they would do it and donate it or do that to reduce cost, cause they, they do all kinds of stuff like this and they're right in our backyard. So basically I want to get it on the agenda while the, while the, uh, all the bridge work and construction is getting done. And, uh, I, I think it'd be super cool to, and, and inviting them as you're coming into town.
I agree, but do we have phones available?
Well, part of, part of it will be like the Somerset United and, and, uh. And, um. Whatever money we make for that will go for projects like this.
So we can do a fundraising?
Yes.
Well, so what do we need to be discussing here today? Other than, uh, you know, uh, the idea is a great idea. I don't disagree with it. It's just a, a matter of we need to. Uh, you know, have the discussion here in our open forum and see if the moving parts, uh, continue to move.
Yeah, basically just put it to the full board to have Chuck, uh, see what the change order would be to, to put in footings while they're doing the work.
The time of public works agenda too.
It was not.
But he would have been in that.
Yeah, I can send him another repeat email and.
I have no, recommending this be discussed by the full, full board. Um, I, I think, um, I, I'll make a motion that we refer this to the full board for, for, um, you know, approval, getting some kind of a change order. And maybe we give, uh, give Chuck a heads up on it, so he can maybe come with a, a cost of what that might be. Um, uh, you know, uh, and so, uh, but, but again, uh, you know, we don't know what the actual cost is, it's pretty much getting the footings in. While we, while we got the chance to do that, right? I mean, because we got ways to go on that and there. There's obviously budget constraints all the way across the board too, so. But my motion is to go further this. My mo- to refer this to the, to the, uh, full board for, uh, discussion to get a change order on what it would cost or. Get, get a cost on a change order for potential for, on such a thing like this. And I don't know if you can do it without seeing the full engineered specs on it or not, so.
I'll second that motion.
First and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
I close.
Email alerts for community members. Andrea, I didn't see anything where on our website where people can subscribe and get notifications.
So, um, I actually have a request in to our revises who manage or. Designed our website.
Revise.
Yeah, they do government websites, um, so they. Said they received my request. I haven't heard anything back, but that actually was part of the, the original design. Was having E alerts, um, and for whatever reason, we've never had it set up, so I'm. Working on that process.
Yours revise order.
Our salesman was from Ohio.
Well, Brandon, do we need to, the email alerts and the app as well, cause Bob was saying that we're having a, that. G I S is going to have that on the app. Will that just be for public works issues? Or so we'll have, so complaints for works will be through the app and then complaints for everything else will be E alerts through the website or.
That's not, but, that's not the way Bob had explained it to us, as Bob had said, we can have it set up anyway, really it's what we want to pay for. Right? And he said you could even set it up for having meetings, you know, specific meetings if you want to push alerts for that. So I think it's a, you know, I, I think it's a good thing to, to, uh, you know, continue to. Look for it to give the community, uh, information when, you know, especially if we didn't have the, uh. If, if we didn't have it set up already, do you have a timeline and when you think you might be able to get, uh, answers from, uh, this, uh, this company?
I'll bother him again tomorrow. So, so hopefully by the board meeting, I'll have him on there.
This is more for getting the information out where you can have people click like, okay, they want meeting. This is more for getting the information out where you can have people click like, okay, they want meetings and agenda items. They, they want just uh, event items or um.
You know, push that, push that over to the board meeting and if you think you might have a, a answer by then, because that'd be great. Okay?
All right, we want to make a motion to move to the.
I'll make a motion to move that community, um, I'm sorry, email alerts to the full board.
There's a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Close. Gary's. Uh, community input on village website. I know when I was talking to, sometimes our, our website is, for me, it's hard to navigate. I'm sure it is for other people too. I know Alicia said she hates the website. Um, I put something on Facebook for, sorry, I'm losing my voice, but I put something on Facebook for other towns had this like beautiful websites and who they use and how much it costs and yeah. I think Brenda, or is there a, what like Richmond's website and?
Richmond's website is by the same company.
Is it? Do you, do you know offhand like what we pay?
Um, we.
Alicia just says like super expensive. I don't know what that is.
A one-time fee to get it set up and that I want to say it was like six or seven thousand.
A year.
No, just the one-time.
The one-time fee, but then what's the monthly or year fee?
An annual. I can go grab it. Um.
Can we change that? Can we actually change it or do you have to be changed like by them? Like could we get someone who knows how to do a web developer? And then they could just do it for us or do they have the specific rates to it?
They have those.
Okay, right. And it's a government website. It's got to have certain security or something.
Yeah. It's their design. It's their design. So if we want, we can change the pictures. We can um, change the, the headings and like the little buttons that are on the side, the quick, I think they're called quick links. Um, we can change all of that ourselves. But the actual like, the thing that I don't really care for is that huge picture at the top. And it takes a couple scrolls before you get to the actual.
Picture of the town or of ten years ago or others, dollars homes up there.
Yeah, well, it, it scrolls through like there's a picture of Olafon, picture of the bridge, you know, so. Um, I think my happy place is on there too. And so, but that, I would prefer like that be the background. But if we want to do that kind of changes, then we have to go through revise and upgrade our design of the website.
Uh, for me too, it's hard to find like forums on there. We could add more.
Right at the top.
Yeah, there's. I think I was looking for an alcohol form. I couldn't find it.
We don't, those are state forms, but we don't have them on our website. They're on the state.
River Falls, City River Falls as it's um, town of Somerset, it has a, just something where people want to go and then find whatever form they're looking for. They should have easy access to it, in my opinion.
I always have trouble finding the link from Unicode too. Like now I know it's buried in public works. No, it's right on the homepage. Scroll.
No, it isn't. Yeah.
It's been there forever. I don't know. Yeah.
But even like the fire hydrant one, I had trouble finding that. And then the uh, the position, the job position, I spent all kinds of trouble finding that.
Well, I have to say, Mike, is a work in progress, you know what I mean? So as we continue to, you continue to, you know, uh, you know, take a look at these items and, and, and expose these uh, you know, deficiencies, like you're saying with uh, you know, other constituents are probably saying the same thing. So, you know, eh, eh, keep putting a, you know, flashlight on these things and saying, you know, let's look at them. And I think Andrea's, if I hear you right, is you're kind of open to, you know, kind of getting that big picture out of there. So it's a little easier to work, right? It's just a matter of, uh, right now we got, you know, training a new uh, you know, clerk coming on and, and stuff like that. So my question is, is there, is there a possibility of maybe hiring somebody to, to take care of this to get it done? And uh, you know, what that would potentially cost for us to contract it out, say here, this is that way, you know, Andrew, you can give your opinion on it and, and everybody can kind of, they can hear it all from everybody and maybe develop something up. And uh, you know, I think down the road, I'd like to see something where it's, it's uh, you know, updated. Uh, uh, you know, a little more frequently or at least, you know, getting stuff out to the community a little more uh, often, you know, um, notices or push notices or whatever the case may be, or special events or, or you know, even the good things that are happening, uh, you know, like the bridge getting redone or the park getting fixed or, you know, that kind of stuff, you know? Um, I, I, I think there's companies out there that will do that. But my question is, is if you're saying they, this, this um, the person that owns that, uh, the, the website has got the rights to making any changes. Is that what you're saying?
Um, the design, so the, how it's laid out. Um, that's what they, we have to go through them to change the layout of it. Well, we can change.
And they own, they own the address also, correct?
No, we own the address.
Okay, okay.
Do you think?
I don't.
Contact information and then I can just ask him like, what do you take to add certain things?
Sure. I don't know that we have to start over.
Yeah, yeah. So we invent the wheel for sure, we just add, add some things to make it more user.
Yeah, we leave it on there and we bring it up and just kind of continue to have updates on it. Because the ongoing thing that's going to continue to, you know, you know, come up until we get it addressed. And there's never going to be a absolute address on this one, you know, it's going to be here forever.
All right, we can move on to proper meeting notices and timeliness of meeting packets. Um, and I think I put this on there too, just more for, um, I'm always looking at the village website to look for the updated agendas and, and I, I, I think, I think we've been doing a better job lately. But I just want to have like maybe some guidelines of how many days in advance it should be on the website and, and then uh, how many days in advance posted at the, the um, other three locations.
So I'm going to say this, is that uh, you know, I think there's a, a request or there's, there's a specific thing for the planning commission, but they have a lot more to look at than we do. But what I'm, what I would say is I don't like stuff coming, um, you know, last minute. And when I say last minute, meaning uh, same week of, you know, constituents and everybody should have time to process that. What's a fair number? I mean, we had one come in last minute and we just talked about a pay application in public works. Where it, it, it got in a little late. Well, we got to kick it to the board now for, for approval, which is fine. But if that happens uh, for a request, um, well, like Somerset United come through with a street use request and that come in late. You know, I mean, it was, it was a question of Donnie, do you want to put it on the uh, the agenda or, or don't you want to put it on the agenda? And I, you know, I'm looking at it going, well, if I don't put it on the agenda, it's not going to happen according to when they want to plan for it. So we got to be careful putting those timelines on there. But if we're upfront with it and saying, hey, um, we'll consider it uh, on a case by case basis, you're opening up the, the worms. It's either, it's either a hard line or it's, it's um, you know, it's, it's exception to the rules every time. I, I prefer to have everything at least the weekend before, so that I got the weekend to review everything before the meeting. And sometimes stuff comes in late and then yeah, I'm sitting there struggling to go through it all at the meeting time, you know?
Would it be fair and easy enough, Andrea, to say five days before the meeting that the agenda is posted at least on the website?
Well, like I said, Mike, you can put that on there, but then if somebody wants to submit something and it comes in late, you know, then, then, then are we going to say, well, no, we put the agenda out. We're not going to modify it.
Yeah, you can revise the agenda up until twenty-four hours before the meeting. So that, that can still be up to us, but to get the initial original agenda out, I think five days is, is um, sufficient. But some, sometimes it doesn't even make it on the, on the website. Then you go try to search around town to see if it's posted.
I'm, I'm perfectly happy with it coming the Friday before the, you know, the, at the end of the day, Friday before the next week. So people can plan.
Agenda, not the packet.
I'm talking, I'm talking both.
Yeah.
You, you know, I'm talking.
This one was posted on May fourth and that was six days prior to the meeting.
Yeah.
I don't think that's a problem.
So can we say six days for the agenda to be posted on the website and the three legal postings and the packet five days before the meeting?
I would recommend, I'm going to make a motion to recommend to the board that uh, we get our packets at least and uh, uh, by Friday uh, the weekend, by the end of the day, the weekend before, you know, the Friday before the meeting be, uh, commences. So if you got a meeting on Wednesday, you got the packet on at the end of the day and the weekend to look at over.
The problem is I know sometimes the clerks don't get the information in time. I mean, I know they send it out as soon as they receive it. Sometimes they're just waiting as well. So I don't know that there's a happy medium. I mean, obviously I, I want the time to review everything as well.
Is there a second?
Was that five days you said?
He said Friday before.
Friday before. And he was talking about the package. You're talking about the agenda.
So.
So timeliness of the packets, you can make a motion on, or second motion if you want on that. Is there anything in the, in the ordinance book? Yeah, it discusses, um, the village board has to be posted by noon on the Friday before the agenda does. Right, it doesn't say anything about the packet information. Okay, yeah.
And that's for the Tuesday's board meeting?
Mm-hmm.
So what about like uh, Monday's public safety meeting?
There is no, nothing in ordinance to them.
Well, there's been times with public works that we've gotten the, we've gotten the information the same day.
The packet information, but you're agenda, you're getting your agenda well before that, right?
Yeah, but some of the stuff was added to the agenda same day too. I mean, uh, you know, twenty-four hours prior. And, and that's, that's the stuff that becomes difficult because when you got a, you know, look at all over and, and, you know, it's not like we're just waiting for that agenda to show up so we can review it and go to a meeting.
Could we say for each of the committee meetings and board meeting that uh, the agenda gets posted six days prior to the meeting and the agenda packet gets uh, emailed to us five days prior to the meeting?
As much as we have. Sometimes we don't have all the.
It's great, but as much as you have, that way we can review what you do have.
Hold on a minute because nobody seconded Donnie's motion. Um, so.
So the motion died?
Yeah, okay.
So I made a motion to uh, have the committee agendas and village board agendas emailed and posted six days prior to the meeting and have the um, meeting um, packets emailed five days prior to the meeting.
Is this a recommendation to the, to the uh, board then, right?
Correct.
Would this require an ordinance amendment? For the village board, yes. Which has a cost of a billion. Mm-hmm.
There's a second.
It's a difficult thing to talk about here, Mike, because when you start putting these hard lines on it, you're, you, you know, you're going to force people to, to um, you know, adhere to that and, you know, all you could really say is we can take this to, I would recommend that we take this to the board for a full discussion rather than us three. I mean, we can recommend that we know we got a problem here with getting this information to the trustees so that they can, they can make an educated uh, decision at the meetings. So if we just pushed it to the board and said, well, we need to get something on that and hopefully they get something done, no matter what at the end of the day. Uh, we can only recommend stuff. The board's got to take the action, especially if it's going to be changing an ordinance.
Well, you could probably do it in a way without changing the ordinance. Cause if it says for the, for the village board, the Friday before, and then we just change the committees to five days before, then we don't have to change any ordinances. That way we're, that way the communities get eating the agendas out in a timely fashion to be able to look.
Chris, are you? But that.
We're getting our packets in a timely fashion that we can review.
Do you want to make a motion to discuss the village board?
No, I want to, I want to have a recommendation for village board, hopefully.
So what's your motion then?
My motion is to keep the, keep it the same. Keep it the same for the village board. So it's a Friday before the Tuesday's meeting with the uh, agendas and the packet. And for any committee mem- committee meetings would be five days prior to the committee meeting to have both the agenda posted and the uh, packet emailed to the members.
That's five business days or five calendar days.
Five calendar days.
So Wednesday, so. You'd be looking at Friday anyways. On a Wednesday meeting, you're looking at everything's got to be posted but, and, and stuff to them by Friday anyways.
Right, but for a Monday meeting for.
But Monday, right, right. So much, we're really talking public safety then.
We're talking all.
Village, well, well, village board.
We're, we're talking all of them for public works, public safety and personal finance Friday.
Really, he's saying there's no change really to what's being, what's happening now. Because Wednesday, Wednesday, that's a Friday deadline, right?
I'm okay with what you're saying. Uh, if you say in five days, uh, because it, it's really, we'll have all of our information. What is going to affect is public, public safety. And that's why I'm saying, Chris, are you okay with that?
I'm fine with that.
And I'm fine with it on personal finance because it's going to be a Friday before in personal finance. So really the only one it's going to, it, it, it comes back down to is personal uh, uh, public safety. And who writes the agenda for public safety? Okay, so here's my question. Are you okay with that?
Sure.
Then I'll second the motion.
Discussion? All in favor?
I.
Close. Gary's. Uh, discussion, possible recommendation, uh, opening the village ball to the public. I put this on the agenda as well. I was really kind of disappointed when every time I come in here, it's like a, feels like a prison with the door locked and all the, what feels like bulletproof glass and and I just, I, I feel like we're a small village and and we, I think we went overboard and, and I don't think it's very welcoming to our constituents, the public. And um, I know the, spoke to Joel, he's fine with it being open. Just my thought. I think it's very. Just my thought, I think it's very like unwelcoming.
Yeah, I, I would tend to agree. I mean, and I, I totally understand that people want that small town experience. Really, um, but the reality is that's not the world we live in anymore. I mean, I think it's best to keep the controlled entry policy for the village home. Um, the money's already been invested, and I think it would be detrimental to go back. Especially with the inclusion of the police department, um, I think it's just better to keep it controlled personally. Our staff has been involved in some very tense situations that could have escalated. People are always welcome to come in if they need a lot longer interaction, you know, they speak to the clerk, they can come in if they need to. So this is not necessarily a reflection about our community, but rather the larger world we live in. Government can be seen as adversarial, and the majority of government buildings have controlled access for this reason. So to me, the safety of our staff is paramount.
Donnie, your thoughts?
Well, tell you what, I was really upset. When I had to go down to pay my taxes and Hudson and give him my po- my pocket knife to go in and write a check, pay my property taxes. So if I gotta get my pocket knife out and give it uh and leave it outside to walk into that building. You know, I, I asked the question and, and they gave me a response that I guess it made a lot of sense and. That response was, you know, we have to protect the employees as well and. Yeah, I, I gotta agree that then there was, there's um situations, I don't wanna put our. Staff in and they're not trained to handle that kind of in, uh, that kind of situation. Um, I'm a member of the carpenters union and, you know, we wanna have our buildings open to everybody, but unfortunately. Uh, we had situations happen where it put some of our staff, some of the staff that we go to all, all the time. In a, a situation that, that they weren't able to, and they weren't trained to handle. And uh, and, and now they have to have panic rooms and everything else in order to, and it was, you know. I think, I think if the staff is comfortable keeping the doors closed and if they're comfortable letting somebody in, I, I. I would hope that they would welcome them in with open arms and uh bring them out in and. Deal with the, the village business when they need to, so I, I, I think um. For now, I think uh I'm kinda with Chris, I, I, we gotta protect our, unless, unless uh they're asking for it to open up. I think we should just kinda hold on that for the time being.
Moving right along, uh, review policy of take home vehicles. And that's something we can um. I'll discuss with Joel and if you, or you can discuss with Joel, see what the police department's doing. Um, and if, Donnie, if you can check with public works and.
You know, we got a, we got a great. We got a great thing with a company that I work with is, it's called Smart uh, Next Track it's called, and it was relatively cheap. And it actually helped out with um one of our vehicles that disappeared on us when we were on a job site downtown Minneapolis. Uh, we were able to track that vehicle down and found out that it was impounded. Um, without even our, our knowledge of it, so um, you know, that, it was really cheap and it wasn't a, a big expense and. And that's uh, we also got a break on our insurance, so I don't know if that's something that, that uh um. That we might be able to look at, but I, I, they got these all over the place on, on equipment, bigger equipment that we have.
Yes, it's basically, it's kinda the same. Along the same lines, but.
Um, Donnie, do you recall, we just talked about the police and Brandon, you might. Remember this too, cause I thought it went to the village board, the police took from vehicle policy.
It was a perk.
Yeah, so they, the only one that takes a vehicle home is the school liaison officer. Um, for the first department. Not take vehicles home. Even when they're on call. Um, the only time they would is if. There's been situations where the plant, the treatment plant has. Been forced to be in manual mode and they work twenty-four hours. Um, that the on-call person would then take a vehicle home because they know that they're going to be. Returning every so many hours um to the treatment plant, but otherwise.
Does the school liaison officer, do they live in the village? Why, why do you school liaison officer have a take home vehicle?
It was part of a, part of a perk within benefits package to help retain officers. We can't offer wages as easily, that was a small municipality, so we offer like electric charging, take home vehicle program, working out. On clock, on the clock, um, that's what we have to offer as tangible items for people to retain employment.
That's a tight market too.
It is.
So we can uh. Basically table the. Policy for take home vehicles till we have more information, and then um, Donnie, you were saying for. Discussion possible recommendation code for GPS and model policy on village owned vehicles. You said smart track, does that, did I write that down right?
Smart track. No, Next Track it's called, sorry. Smart Track was our system that we had at S and A for tracking inventory. It's called Next Track, N E X T R A C.
Is the goal to not have the vehicle stolen, or what, what is the goal?
Make sure people are working on doing what they're supposed to do and, and not just.
So who's gonna monitor that?
It's also to protect village assets too, you know, I mean, we, we got village assets out there and, and, and this is.
Have village assets gone missing?
Well, we don't know.
We don't have an inventory on what we have?
There, there isn't really a city around here that doesn't have GPS tracking on their vehicles.
Honestly, I'm a little surprised they're not.
There are on the police and vehicle. Uh, and nobody would have access to that.
Yeah, no one can have access to it.
So it's basically public works.
Is Bob worried about what the guys are doing, or Donnie worried about the guys are doing, is that what this is driven from?
For me, it's a, for me, it's an asset protection, it's also a, a matter of uh, of having it, it's not saying that one of our. Our guys out there, like I said before, um, we had this on, on ours. Uh, at, at our company and lo and behold, the guys come out and the vehicle was gone. So uh, we were able to track it down and I said, but that'd be a great thing, I mean, uh, yeah, I keep, I keep, I'd keep it on all of my company vehicles. The, the price that we have on it is, is relatively cheap.
You wanna make a motion, Donnie?
Well, let me get some more information on it and I'll bring it to the, bring it to, you know, you guys so you can make an educated guess on it before, or educated decision on it.
Sorry, Donnie, shouldn't this come before the public works board then, if this is specifically gonna be for public works?
Be for every, all, all.
Vehicles already have it, they said.
It's for, then it would be public works. It's village owned vehicles, which goes for personnel and finance, so thank you for your uh comments. Take it from here. Alright, create an ad hoc committee for the Somerset Champions. Um, Caleb uh, Caleb Garn was part of the cap process and now that he's on, now that he's a trustee. He's agreed to be the liaison between the village board and the uh, the Somerset Champions. Groups that came out of the, the cap meetings. We had a meeting last night. I had a different meeting, so I zoomed in, but it was, it was very informative and. They, they wanted to do things like uh work on improving the signage in town and, and uh. Just different community projects to bring everybody together and make this place look and feel better.
I don't think we need any action.
Uh, just, just that we recognize that we created an ad hoc. Yeah, our committee called the Somerset Champions. And as of right now, uh, village trustee Garn is the liaison.
Lovely, very exciting. And I love getting the citizens involved, hands on projects, and we can actually participate in our community.
There was a lot of people that showed up to meet.
You need a motion, you, motion did that affect?
Uh, we might as well just to make it official.
Not an official committee of.
To recommend to the board to create an ad hoc committee. Called the Somerset Champions.
Andrew, I'm sorry, I'm a little confused.
Is this an official committee of the village? Or is it a separate committee that Caleb Garn is going to be the liaison between that and the village board?
They'll report to us.
You need to appoint members. Of this committee, which it sounds like it's already created.
And we can get the, the member names to you later, so uh. Current trustee Caleb Garn is the, is the liaison between the village board and the ad hoc committee and. And the ad hoc committee will come to us with, with uh recommendations.
Well, my, my, my uh motion was to recommend the creation of the ad hoc committee. The Somerset Champions, the board uh of trustees can debate that uh once it's in front of them.
There a second?
Chris asked for clarification from me, Donnie, that's what, why I was talking.
So if it's an official board. Committee, then it'll be ruled by our ordinances as well, right? And then would they be okay with that? We don't wanna take over their, they're, they're doing great work. I just hate to impress anything on their, their committees already doing their work.
Wanna make them official committee? That we help set up so they can know to come to us and.
Is there, is, here's my question, is there an ordinance that we need to be uh concerned about? With regards to uh creating an ad hoc committee?
We would have to do some research.
So if we approve this to go to the board, then we can at least have that discussion with the board, and if it's, if there is a. An issue with the ordinance, then we can uh decide to no action or whatnot at that point in time, right? And my motion still stands.
There a second?
Uh, I'll second that motion.
Discussion. All in favor? Motion carries. Create community complaint form for village website and um social media Facebook page. I know there's already like a contact us thing on, on our page, but I, I think it's uh, it'd be nice to have.
Well, can I make a suggestion, and we already have, have uh the update going on here with the uh. Um, looking at the uh. The E, uh, the website. So if there's a complete, can't we just incorporate that into the, the only issue outstanding here is the Facebook page then, right?
Then who's it go to?
It goes to the info email.
Which goes to?
Goes to the clerks. Amy and myself.
My thought on this is to have something a little less. Official looking and where somebody can say, hey, there's a pothole over here, can you come take a look at it? And it can go to whatever on a Google form, it can be emailed out to. Any or all village employees that want it or.
Isn't that the, the app that was that? The GIS map, you can click on there and say there's a pothole.
Having an app is different than being able to go to a website or Facebook page, they're two different, two different worlds. This would be a simple link on a Google form that can be emailed to. Everybody, and then it can be a, a task that, it's a public work problem, can be a, a task that's assigned to the public works guys. I just, I, I think there's so many things that have fallen through the cracks. Around town that it just, we need, we need something where people feel comfortable saying, hey. There's this pothole over here, or I've had it where the. The headstone at Larry Forest is about to fall down. And there's, there's no accountability right now, there's no way to, to get things done. Um, and people are, people are messaging me directly on my Facebook for anything and everything, I think they just need a. A better, easier way just to get the, get the information out there so we know it can get fixed.
That's a good idea. I'm hearing things now too, you know, the benches at this park need to be, you know, sanded and repainted.
Right, and then you give them a little link, you put your thing in here and then we'll follow up and make sure it's. Getting taken care of, but it, it won't cost anything, and I, I can put a Google form together. Like nothing and add everybody's email to it so we all know. What people's complaints are, instead of just acting, pretending that we know and we don't know what comes in on the info or anything.
And add that link to the website then.
To the website and the Facebook page.
Well, that's not a difficult thing to do, it sounds like.
It's too breezy. Too breezy.
So if you get the Google doc over to Andrea, Andrea, are you opposed to putting it on the, on uh Facebook and, and uh. Uh, the village website? It, we could pu- potentially be uh making sure that everybody then knows not, it, it's gonna, cause it's gonna go to all the village. Uh, trustees and. We also should go to department heads as well.
Correct.
So that they're not left out of the loop on this and they're able to see that, and then, then we can always follow up with them if we need to.
Then we might need a policy of who is gonna follow up, so that this person complaining isn't going to get twenty responses that are inconsistent.
Right, and that's what we talked about too, cause uh, as of right now, it doesn't sound like the village has like a task management. Program, so. Something like this, if it's like a, a weed problem, it gets assigned to Ben Newman, if it's a parks problem, then it gets. Uh, assigned to Neil, and then you, you follow up, he checks the box that he. That he fixes it, fixes it and, and then.
Again, uh, it's one, again, it's, it's one step at a time here, you know, so first thing is getting the form out there. And we'll, you know, a- and then we can always, you know, if it falls to the department heads or whatever, if, if we, sometimes a couple people cross over on this. Until we get it streamlined for a policy, but if you wanna get a form out there, at least people can know about it, and I think it might. Open up the eyes of, of some of the other trustees of, wow, this is all going on in the background and we don't know it. So I'm, I'm in favor of that, I'll make a motion that we, do we, do we need a motion on that?
Not really. You can just tell me to do it.
Motion carries. Discussion possible recommendation, police department improvements. I'm surprised when I went back to the police department the other day and the. The eagle sign that I bought twenty-two years ago is still up there, the blinds are all smashed and. Same ones, uh, half the ceiling done, not half, but a lot of the ceiling tiles are missing and discolored. They're the same orange doors that were.
Have you had a discussion, have you had a discussion with, uh, with Joel on that, is there a plan to to make some improvements over there or what?
Yeah, um, uh, we've talked about a couple of different things, we've talked about. Uh, like. Us and the officers. Painting, doing the painting and stuff ourselves, um. He's going to get like a materials list for the new ceiling tiles. Um, new LED lights, painting the doors, um. They, they wanna rip out the carpet and put in that vinyl planking. Um, I have a canine buddy of mine that owns his own flooring company that we can get it at his cost, so I think we can do it. I think like a thousand dollars was go a long, long ways back there. Um, then flooring will be more expensive than that, I'm sure, but, um, but. Even just ceiling tile and some paint to start will. Because like Joel says, it's right now bringing people back there, it's kind of embarrassing. You go even in the new part that was just built a couple of years ago, and there's. Six, I think six ceiling tiles just missing.
I think the entire part prior to the, 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 uh, you know, in the last. Couple of months is, I already recognize the needs of, uh, that we need to do some upgrades and and stuff like that's been brought to our attention too. Mike, uh, you know, really, it's gotta be, you know, something that we need to look at. You know, from a budgeting standpoint and also from, you know, a recommendation from the department heads on this stuff is like, hey, I need this done. So can we do it, and we need to see how much money we got in the budget. Uh, and and then if we have some money in the budget for that kinda stuff, then let's, let's figure out how to get it done.
Yeah, I, uh, I agree there, and then. Or after we do whatever maintenance and improvements we we do do, we have, uh. One of our public works guys assigned as a building maintenance supervisor, so if they have an issue. They can call up to them or put it in the work order and be like. Hey, this needs to be done, I mean, I, I remember one time, this is getting off track just a little bit, but I remember one time. When I was with the police department, the toilet was running and they had to call a plumber to fix it. And it was just a flap, you know, so it's like, somebody needs to. Somebody needs to be held. Responsible to take care of the stuff in this building, not just for the police department, but even like bulbs and stuff in here, somebody. Somebody that we already paid to do work. Can do the work.
Agreed. Like you said, one step at a time, them guys will have a new Google doc here pretty soon that they can send out, get the the toilets fixed or whatever else, uh. All they gotta do is fill out the doc and it emails to all of us, and then we'll make sure that we're held accountable.
I like it. I like it, um, to get things going, um, could we maybe entertain a motion to. Where they can start out with five hundred dollars.
You don't even have to, they can spend that through the spending policy without committee or board approval.
Who and whose budget does that come out of, the building fund or the?
It would come out of.
Well, Joel. Joel would send the request to you, wouldn't you, wouldn't he?
Me?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, but then five hundred dollars is still the spending limit?
Mm-hmm. A thousand.
A thousand, there we go, that's my second number then.
So we're good?
Yeah, we are, we are golden there. And that, just to, now we come out of the regular building general fund, right, not the, not the police department thing, it's.
Right.
It's not really police department related, other than. It's inside of the police department. And then if you guys wanna come to us, we wanna make it nice, and I don't see us. I don't, I haven't seen any money in capital outlay for like a new building or anything down the road, so that's something we might wanna look at as far as. Starting to put money aside for a, a new building.
Mm-hmm.
But that's why we're meeting with that, them, different companies to determine one of them that can assess our needs and what. What we need to look at and and what we need to start budgeting for.
But that's twenty-four thousand dollars.
Yeah, I think it was, I I have to look back at it again, I I.
The old way?
Well, the. The two need assessment or facility assessment.
I think it was around twenty.
They were like. They were like five dollars apart.
I think they were twenty, I think they were around twenty-four, twenty-five grand. Can you, can you email those to, to us, so we can take a look at what that would entail? You can go from there and then, um. Wanna like to. Make a motion to convene to close session, uh, per statute nineteen point eight five, one C, considering employment of a public employee. Which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises of responsibility, and this would be for the clerk. Positions and the applications that came in.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Gotta take a, I'll vote on that, I believe, Mr. Chairman.
Uh.
I.
Roll, roll call, okay. Donnie, was I, myself, I.
Chris, do bag, aye.
Chris, I, um, if I wanna stick around, I can stick around for the close session, right? You know, not.
Yes, you can.
We can also present.
Any part of America can join a close session.
Do we need to do a roll call then, or are you part of that or?
I'll just note it.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. He can't be part of the discussion, but he can listen.
Um, interesting, I was at a town, is there, are we done recording?
Um, did you say motion period?
Yes.
Okay.
Am I the closed session reviewing the village clerk applications, we've narrowed it down to a few.
I made a motion to come out of closed session.
Chris.
You said, Chris, I mean, you said.
For a second.
Thank you.
Narrowed it down to, uh, a few that we're interested to. Reach out to and and set up interviews for Wednesday, the twenty-fourth and Thursday, the twenty-fifth.
Do we have a, a pay schedule by any chance of what, uh, will you be able to provide that to us, Andrea, of what our. Our pay range is based on our, our policies?
Yep.
Thank you, and then maybe the benefits end of it as well, and, um. You know, so that we, if if we're interviewing them, we could actually. Um, decide whether or not we're gonna, you know. Talk about that at the interview process or not. That being said, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Who's waiting for that?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Reading adjourned, thank you guys. Nice work.
Have a good night, guys.
You as well, thank you.